I'm allowing you to go ahead and share the screen.
So is it Saint Mark's Church?
Yeah.
And what, what is the password?
Um, you don't need one. I didn't need one.
Okay. Okay. Oh, yeah.
I've muted mine.
I heard a noise. Is, are we on? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I can't hear anything.
We're, we're starting now.
Okay.
So let's go ahead and call the meeting in order.
There's any feedback?
Give me the roll call, please, Bob.
Yes, the roll call is President Palmer.
Here.
Member Army.
Here.
This President, Baron.
Here.
Member O'Neill is absent. And Member Ross is absent.
Can you assign it to me and then we'll just close it? It's muted already. There's another problem.
I think it's just. All right. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty of justice for all.
Right.
You can assign.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you. You and the Zoom. I see you.
We can, can go to Zoom.
Okay, well, we'll get started. Item four, Director comments. Director Baron. Director Baron. The only comment I have is that Bob and I did have a virtual meeting with the water board, James Fisher and Mo Beek. Just to update them on where we are and also had some feedback regarding funding. They also did express interest in helping us support funding requests. When appropriate, so that was. All right, moving on to slide five. Public comment. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment? If it's not on the mic agenda. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Okay, then we'll move on to item six, board workshop discussion regarding acceptance of the sewer for pressure project.
And if we can just wait a second so that we can get this resolved.
Does anybody here know how to assign me the post? Then we'll just.
Let's just kill. Start killing them.
Ryan, it's your turn.
Yeah. Actually. It's up here. Is anyone? It's actually up here, I think. Sorry, that's a really attractive question.
The Zoom participants, there's a very bad echo and that turns into feedback pretty quickly.
Just not finding the assigned participant. Anyone put it in the chat? That would be great. I mean, assign host.
Wouldn't you if you went back to resume meeting itself?
No.
Okay, thanks. Now, if everyone can talk loudly, there's a shared speaker and microphone here that the room won't be using. So you need to speak loudly.
Okay, can we go to the presentation? First of all, I would like to thank the board for scheduling the workshop. I think it's at a critical time and there are a number of things that we need to discuss. Going over briefly, the purpose of the workshop is first of all, I always think it's a good idea to very quickly take a look at the district's activity progress within the last several months. Then is to take a, a snapshot of the FY 2122 budget. Purpose of that is, is to give you an update as to where we were financially as of September 30th. And in doing that, we'll also look at projections. What's happened since the beginning of the fiscal year and some thoughts about options that the board has depending on what direction they choose to go. We also want to understand the geotech work as well as its current relationship to the design. Understand grant opportunities and how they correlate to design review and construction milestones and costs. And then broadly look at options and recommendations. In terms of recent actions and progress, just quickly, since we've got a limited audience, I'll just go through these. We have been awarded, as you all know, the $150,000 state matching grant for planning studies and feasibility design. We actually earlier this year completed the groundwater monitoring plan through GSI and providing baseline and tracking of water quality improvement information. There was also a notice to proceed issued to STANTE for the feasibility concept of planning preliminary and preliminary design. We also received a high level planning estimate for treated effluence injection from GSI. We, most recently, I issued a notice to proceed to MNS for continued grant assistance. There's approximately $10,000 in the budget and based on my ability to authorize up to $5,000, I in fact did that with MNS so that we could get a head start at looking at grants. Also, as you're all aware, we received the last attention to June of 2023 in terms of completing an assessment vote. And we've been coordinating with the County of Santa Barbara as well as the Regional Water Quality Board and other nonprofit agencies in the county. Moving along to the budgets now.
Bob, if I could, on the one bullet that was awarded, $150,000 state matching, we haven't accepted that yet. So I think we've been told we'll be awarded it.
Yes.
But it isn't.
That, that's absolutely correct. And in fact, I checked with the state probably within the last week and was just assured that the documents are still under very final review before being forwarded to the district. And have you had any communication with the state, Doug, other than that? All right, so we're still waiting. And I had hoped actually that it would be available and maybe there's still hope. But it's getting slim that I'd have those contract documents in time for the November meet. The one thing I should have mentioned at the very beginning, this is in fact a workshop. So it is interactive between the board and, and ourselves and any member of the public that may be out there. So my point being is we go through this information in this presentation, you know, feel free to stop us at any point and ask questions. And we will do our best to try and answer those questions. Moving on to the snapshot of the budget. The budget is, you see that left column and it represents the approved budget. Overall expenditures are $575,330. And it anticipated the use of district funds that we have basically in reserve to make everything work. I will note that in the direct expenditures items and direct support services, all of those items seem to be tracking along fairly well. And at this time, no deviations expected. I will note that this was a bit high. I'm, excuse me, this was, the, the, this report is tied to September 30th. There are still invoices that are now pending that have not been reviewed by the finance committee. And they will be on your agenda. So this will change, modify slightly the expenditures today. The major item I wanted to point out is with the professional services area. And as you note on the approved budget, there was total approved for professional services of $439,000. You'll note that, that there's a line item there that says available professional expenditures. That was 115,750 was left there or identified as expenditures that could be available to augment the planning effort over and above what you see here. The next slide, if you could, looking at, not, there you go. Looking at what was anticipated at the time the budget was approved. There was a preliminary design amount estimated at 180,000. Geotech, the 48,250 was essentially to complete the $85,000 contract that we have ongoing with GSI. There was a preliminary environmental amount identified at 65,000. And the assessment engineer was identified at 30,000. And again, that left 115,750 for additional consultant costs. The contract estimate at that time for preliminary design was $158,000. I, I, I did want to note that that estimate was based on the first proposal that we received from STANTE. And that, the important thing to remember about that first S, that contract estimate was that, that was to provide a preliminary design for a project that took in primarily the commercial area at, at the preliminary design level. The board subsequently in, in reviewing the proposal communicated to STANTE as well as staff that really what needed to be done was that a, a full project design for the entire community had to be done so that when we get to the assessment, we'd have a full project design to be able to base that assessment on. That resulted in an overall adjustment of 138,750. I want to point out however, that, that 138,750 also includes the $10,000 for the siting review as well as $20,000 that was estimated to update the load study. The original load study that had been done was, was again, just focused primarily on completing maybe project for the commercial area. Although it had a lot of community based information and put it in that study as well.
Bob, can we just make a sound check? Can, can those on Zoom hear us? Can you hear us, Ross?
Yes, very well. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Geotech, again, the 48,250. And most recently, we've received the, the estimate from GSI to complete the feasibility study for the injection part of the project. That total amount was 217,075. We've not authorized that. But I did extend it here just so you could see what that impact would be. I, I should mention that of that 217,075, the board had authorized $12,500 to complete the high, the first task of that analysis, which was the high level climbing estimate that GSI has completed. The net impact of that, the rest of the items, the preliminary environmental is still estimated at 65,000. And the assessment engineer is still estimated at $30,000. But what's happened is obviously the amount that had been available for additional professional expenses has disappeared. Should the board authorize GSI to proceed, that would result in an overall climb in the, in the professional service, direct professional services area from the original 439,000 to 657,075. That would mean a shortfall at 218,075. That doesn't mean that that shortfall exists at the present time. It just means that should you choose to find a way to move forward with GSI, that's what we would be looking here.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So when GSI was here and we talked about this activity, which depends on one or two wells being drilled. We asked them about the cost because they stated in their proposal that the costs of those wells were not included. And so then we asked them how much do the wells cost? And the answer was $100,000 each. Then it was 150,000 each. And then it went to 300. So I don't know what the real cost of the wells are, but I believe one of the wells is for injection, the one's a monitoring well. So maybe the monitoring well is only 100K. But the injection well is going to be between 100 and 100K. So to say that GSI is going to cost 265 total, I believe is lost by a factor of two or so.
And you're right. And I should have corrected, I should have indicated in the very beginning that, that this estimate from GSI does not include well drilling costs. Those well drilling costs are, are significant depending on what kind of well you would like to, you know, you eventually end up installing. The, the cheaper version would probably cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000. The, the upper end cost of that could be as high as $800,000. And the reason for that is, you know, is the depth of the well. If you go 800 feet down, that well is going to be a significant cost. There, the diameter, the way the well is constructed, the material of the well. Doug, maybe you can comment on that. There was some discussion with GSI that perhaps the well could then be reused.
Yeah, Tim, you can unmute if you want, because you can add to this or, or Andy. But my understanding is that there's different ways to do well. Think of an injection well as being developed very similarly to a domestic well where you don't just drill a hole and see if it's good water and then put in a casing. You put the casing in. And, and then you can choose a 12 inch casing or an 18 inch casing. And for injection, you want the larger casing to assure longevity and functionality. You want to add to that, Tim?
Uh, sure, sure. Thank you, Doug and Bob for teeing that up. Correct. Most, many of the wells in the near vicinity of Los Olivos that are used as groundwater production wells are completed in the, it's called the Paso Robles Formation Aquifer, which is from something like 300 feet to 1,000 feet deep below the ground surface, something like that. And many of the wells are on the order of 800 feet. And actually, there are not a small number of the nearby wells that are as much as 1,000 feet deep. So based, based on our homework of, of, and, and, and effort to, to provide a best estimate of what that drilling cost would be. We looked at two different options and we provided some information to Bob on that. Sort of the, sort of like the cheapest option with a simple, what they call low carbon steel casing instead of stainless steel. And the simplest construction and sizing that we think we could get away with or make do with. And that, that 800 foot test well, production well would be on the order of 400. And that that eight hundred foot test well, production well would be on the order of four hundred thousand dollars for the cheap end. And for a more high quality well, that would really be something that you could, that the district could preserve and use for the long term project would be a well of similar depth, eighteen inch diameter casing and high quality well construction materials, which would be stainless steel, which has a much longer life lifetime. And then that higher quality well would be on the order of eight hundred thousand for the driller cost. And as Bob also mentioned, there's also, we need to have for some of the testing and monitoring, both just for the fundamental analysis of the act of the properties, but also eventually for permitting requirements. There would need to be a appropriately sized and deep monitoring well. You know, offset from the test well by some distance. And then that's on the order of two hundred thousand for that kind of eight hundred foot monitoring. Those are some of the numbers that we we pulled together the last few weeks. To just sit more light on this.
Yeah, another data point, just so we have it, we had a meeting with Cambria Services District, and they're the only Central Coast agency that has an injection well. They have a desalination plant. They have a community of about six thousand connections, I guess, and they actually treat their wastewater effluent to drinking standards, just like we're proposing. We always initially thought, we initially thought that we would be injecting into the shallow aquifer, maybe down to a hundred hundred and twenty feet. That's what they do in Cambodia. We talked about that with them and they indicated they weren't worried about mounding and eruption to the surface because they're in a big sand dune all the way down. And I don't know that we have that same configuration, but their injection is into their shallow groundwater. If they go much deeper, they might get into I don't know if there's saline intrusion or anything deeper where their plant is. Probably not. They're quite a ways off the coast, but in in terms of maybe a quarter to a half mile. But I just wanted to share that with you that they were concerned about mounding also, but when they operated their plant an injection for six thousand connections for a full year, they didn't have any problems with that because they attribute that to the sand formation.
Madam President, if you could, if I could, a question. So the question I have for for GSI is twofold. Is 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 it just possible that we might be able to work with someone that has an existing well that could produce enough information for you at this point? And secondly, minimize the cost. And secondly, you know, in trying to get to where we want to go, which is, you know, a complete decent estimate for the injection method, is there any other any alternative to your 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 stated scope of work at the present time that would allow us to do that? So there's really two questions there.
Yeah, got it. Thank you. Sure. In your first question, if the use of an existing well would be beneficial to this process? Absolutely. There there we think there are likely existing wells in the area. We haven't done all of our so 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 called homework on that, but we we know of a couple and there may be more, but we do need I think to, as a as a group collectively to to follow up on that and to evaluate if there's a well of sufficient construction criteria, you know, deep enough and big enough at least to do some of this testing work. I mean, maybe it's not the well that gets used for future injection. But if we could use an existing well to do some of this testing, and you know, it'd be a few weeks of testing. So it'd have to be something where we could get access to the well and and evaluate if it's appropriate, do a little bit of due diligence on the well, ensure that it's in good shape. It's going to provide representative information. It could absolutely save a substantial amount of 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 time and money, both our costs in terms of all the fooling around takes to put in a design and put in a new well. And also, of course, the driller's cost, which is the bigger piece. So that's that's excellent question, and I would encourage the the district to you know, follow any leads that arise in terms of potential existing wells that could be utilized. And we'd be glad to support that.
The other, yeah, to the second question.
Yeah. Well, you know, we we looked additionally at the the shallow zone as a target for the injection rather than just doing the groundwater monitoring of that nitrate issue that is prevalent apparently or supposedly within the shallow zone. We don't have really great data on that. It 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 seemed like a lot of the data was limited. There was a concern of of the mounding building up. The the shallow zone is pretty shallow and it's right under all of the developed area. So it seemed like there was insufficient space and aquifer characteristics to do the scale of injection that we're talking about for this project into that unit. The potential risks were not not trivial. So that that's, and so that was many months ago, we kind of had a few conversations and discussions and did some analysis and looked at the the deeper unit as as the more preferable target zone for the for the injection to occur. In terms of besides injection, I mean, there's there's other methods to dispose of of the recycled water, of the treated wet, treated effluent. And we've talked about those in some of these meetings before as well, whether there's percolation basins, which take a lot of land, a couple acres somewhere. And then we also talked about, you know, discharging in Talamo Pintado Creek. Those are those are permitting questions, really, and kind of how do I say it, logistical, you know, would it work logistically? So those are some of the options that we've thought about and discussed previously.
You know, there's some additional considerations that have come up in our discussions with Cambria. And one of the things that we may want to do on the onset before making the decision to move forward with the full scope of a concept of feasibility, design of injection is to piece all these considerations together. And a reasonable or conservative planning estimate may show that there's alternatives that are more cost effective. So it for example, in order to treat to potable level, basically, the concept is toilet to tap, which is a phrase that we don't like to use, but that's what Cambridge is doing and that's what we would be doing is we have to run it through an RO unit two or three times to extract everything necessary and to also reduce the amount of fluid that's part of the saline slurry that has to be trucked offsite. Now, their costs are maybe ten to fifteen times what ours would be, but their current cost for hauling that saline to a ocean outfall is about a hundred thousand dollars a month. And we also have trucking costs for the sludge slurry. And so we we can piece together those costs plus the the testing. They're required to test prior to injection and then during an inject, during injection, and they have to have real time testing support and onsite staff monitoring that constantly during injection. And so those are costs that we can understand more through their experience that we're learning more about now. Again, injection is not common. There's only a few instances and examples of it locally and even regionally. But we can get that data, those data points. So it's the the thought has just come that prior to doing the full concept study, we may want to put together you know, revise or add to the planning level study with operational costs. And compare it to other options and then see if that, we want to pursue that and spend if we can afford to move towards that option.
If if I may, one one last thought, I I had a third thing that I just neglected to mention when I was talking about alternatives that we've thought about. And that is to to send the the partially treated wastewater to a an existing wastewater treatment facility, which is what this, which is what City of Santa Inez does. They just, their wastewater division is simply a collection role, as I understand it. This is more Stamtech's Autumn's territory, but and they they just send it to the city of Solvang and so and and pay a fee to have it treated. But at the solving, we just want to plant on that.
We've crossed that.
Yeah.
We're not there.
I didn't think so. Okay, I just wanted to lay out my complete thoughts.
Do you have questions for GSI? This is Mike Harvey. I I have just one. So the way I understand it is you're figuring roughly a thousand dollars a vertical foot in your estimate?
Well, I for for a completed well, right, for all of all of all the facility, all the construction costs and
Well, I know that that's what I, that's what I do for a living, so.
We didn't come about it that way, though, just by a per foot cost. We actually have a detailed spreadsheet that has the materials costs, the drill, the driller's cost for foot, per foot for drilling and reaming and all of the filter pack and the casing and all the different bits and pieces. We have detailed costs of that.
Yeah, it's I understand all that works. I've been in this industry for thirty years and the tunneling contractor, microtunneling, I know drilling, I know everything about it. So it just seems high to me. So but I'm you're probably being conservative to give us a ballpark, but as these costs go, I mean, it almost seems like if the dollars keep going the way they are, we might be better off running a a parallel reclaim line and selling the water, trying to get revenue from that versus paying all this stuff and then hauling everything, doing everything. It just seems like as these costs extrapolate or put in the sewer, maybe we run a parallel reclaim line and take care of it.
The drilling costs have gone up a lot in the last couple of years, last several years, and they've gone up a lot. Also, in the last year or two, it's sort of another COVID casualty, materials costs have gone up quite a bit.
Yep.
So we we're we are including some conservative assumption on those costs. So I hope that they are higher than what
If I could just talk with Director Harvey said, my same thought was that I think our initial thought was injection is the way to go, and I'm not saying that it's not. But I kind of like maybe something like along the lines of what what Mr. Pike said about doing some level of work and let's talk about when and how. Because there there is creep disposal. We start treating plants all over this country and all over the world do it that way, even in this county. We could have the percolation, as was mentioned, land cost back from that. You can also have sprinkler irrigation, that's how we do the sanitation and cities want to be, you know, so many, that's very these are all common techniques, but that takes land too, but we do have ag operations around that. But it seems like there's a lot of unanswered questions, but huge, huge cost implications that that need to be done and be done thoughtfully. And and what I see is that the critical path right now is the design. And I know we'll get to that. The disposal options, the the design of the collection system and the treatment plant, you know, are less dependent on what the disposal is. Because you, if if we are going to have a plant some location in the well or somewhere else, it's up to that. If we're going to pump to a sprinkler irrigation site, say infiltration ponds, which I don't know that infiltration ponds are the thing to do here. That's something that needs to put that though. But I have a lot more comments, maybe we should continue more.
I really agree with that, and I think we're not going to solve the problem here now, but can we identify the process to view our option direction to go? I mean, that's all first workshop is to get going in that direction, right? And solve it. So is there somebody or a team or can we do it? How how would we evaluate options for dealing with effluent? And come up with the right answer?
Or in, we're in a process right now that's attempting to do that. Stamtech has rightfully pointed out that for them to complete a even a thirty percent cost estimate to go with their thirty percent design, that effluent disposal component needs to be figured out. We can have different options that can plug in, compare. But so we're on on a path to understand injection. Concurrently, we should also be looking at what what does it look like to permit and release to Elmo Potato Creek? What would it be to build chambers, percolation chambers in a smaller footprint if that's feasible? And I think another option ought to be what what would it take to obtain acreage? It's I I I don't want to overstate it, but but it's far enough away that we're not going to have a concerted effort in the community to derail the project. And we'll become like Los Osos if that happens, but might be worth it to somehow carry by pipe the effluent to a location that can be percolated in ponds. We'd need about four acres, maybe five. And that's just another another option to look at. And then we, once we secure an ability to take care of the effluent on our own without relying on sales, then we can look at sales. That's always the way you do it, case, you know, those that are accepting the water stop accepting it, then we have a place to put it. But we can recapture costs for whatever we can sell.
So you're, are you going to be the principal investigator for this or do you have other people that have to be involved? How long do things going to take?
Well, we have, we're developing a a concept to have GSI help us pursue for the injection. And we need to obtain a scope and a cost from someone, whether it be Stamtech or M and S or another engineer to to look at others. They're they're not as complicated that it's a it's a large investment. I think that would be a modest investment because those are the common ways. There's a lot of data points. It's actually very reasonable to think that we could do it in-house with the district engineer to put together concept costs that are fairly accurate.
So how how long do we take?
Wasn't a lot of it to be predicated on onsite?
Yeah, I don't, I I don't know that I understand that we need to know that for Stamtech to do the work that is I mean, even as as Doug said, you know, if there's a sprinkler irrigation area that is removed enough that we don't have community outcry or or pawns, if the the plant can be, you know, it's going to have to have a line that's going to go there anyway. So I won't be in favor of slowing Stamtech down to solve this problem. I almost think when Stamtech's designing that, let this, that this follow. I won't be in favor of slowing Stan Tech down to solve this problem. I almost think when Stan Tech's designing that, let this, that this follow.
We can treat it like a plugin.
Yeah, like, yeah, like, like a plugin. I, I do believe that the plant, those, those products want to do it, needs to have access to the, to the creek, if nothing else, for emergency, it needs to be dual permitted. I've said that all along, it's dual permitted to allow if there's a failure in an injection well or inability to accept sprinkler irrigation or ceiling of the ponds. I mean, the water's not stopping, so there has to be fails. And then if I'd rather see this, I like the idea of reviewing the disposal options again to see what is the best bet. But I want that piecemeal, you know, Doug doing piece. I, I want one entity, and I don't know if that's who that is to, to, to really take a look and give us that. That's going to cost money and I don't know when we're going to be able to afford that. You know, we probably have to get additional grant money in order to do that work. Because what, and I, what I'm sensing and what I've said along, I'm not in a hurry here to do this for the sake of doing it at the risk of doing it right. And I don't, I'm not saying that, that anybody is thinking something like that, but I, I point out that when we talk about, well, how fast can we do this or do that? I, that, that shuts me down right there because I don't, I don't want to cut a corner. We are going to pay for this for the rest of all of our lives that live here and our kids' lives and everybody else's lives. We do it right now. We do, we do it correctly. And then implement it, you know, so that it's the most efficient way to, to handle this.
I have a, a question and maybe it's for Stan Tech and Doug. You know, given that Stan Tech is moving along with the design at the present time, and in order to get to 30% design completed in a timely fashion, is there a can the board simply state that they want the treatment to a given level and that would be sufficient to at least, you know, the package plant, there are different designs according to how you're going to discharge that effluent. And I, I'm just asking, is there a way that we can get to a treatment level within the package plant that would satisfy Stan Tech in terms of what it needs to complete its portion of the work?
That, that's not a standard problem, is it? Because the, I think, as you said, the, the plug-in treatment system, we're going to, we're going to open up the catalog and say, yeah, well, that's the one and why. I, I don't know enough about those package plants, but I assume they can be dialed.
They can be dialed and they can.
So all Stan Tech needs to do is say, well, we need a site that will take four units or whatever it is, and you know, house the building and, and do all the things that we need to do. And we don't need to answer that question. That, that question will come after we look at our options and determine that, that, that very, very same. And I, and I would just go, go back to, I wanted to mention too, is that the whole premise of, of this whole movement towards sewer ring and, and, and addressing the town is for groundwater pushes in the shallow zone, right? Am I wrong? So we're going to recharge then, we're going to build an $800,000 well and inject it down to where the water isn't impaired. It's in the check, which by the way, I don't believe the shallow water aquifer is used for beneficial uses that I'm aware of in town. I don't, I don't know that, but I'm not aware of a shallow well that is impaired where someone has a shallow well and can't use it because of nitrates. If I'm missing that, someone tell me that, but I'm not aware of that because we all have to be on municipal water. And which is ID one. So, so it kind of begs the question then for about injection. The whole premise was, well, we were going to address the, the groundwater quality by injecting better water and over time, then that will flush itself out. And which I also, I've always questioned, you know, the water board, you know, regulates groundwater quality for beneficial use. And I don't know that there's beneficial use in the shallow zone. So what are we, what are we solving? Now, I think the, the water board is going to say, it doesn't matter that high nitrates in the groundwater is bad no matter what. Okay. I, I, I get, but if we're not going to inject in the shallow zone where the high nitrates are, then then we're going to expend the cost to go deeper. That, that doesn't seem to be back our initial intent. Maybe we end up there anyway. I mean, it is indirect potable reuse because ID one's going to pull it out somewhere or if someone is, so.
Well, to answer directly the question Bob that you had. So if we're looking at a, a package, you know, that's MBR technology, then the basic unit is the basic unit and additional treatment are in fact plugins at the end of the treatment stream. That's right.
You have a footprint of just the max and then you let them use that as a study and wherever we go, we go.
Right. And, and so that's what we will do is we'll assume a train length and width that has RO unit sufficient to treat to drinking water standards. And, and those are in fact plugins that have distinct costs. What dramatically changes, I think, are operational costs. And so we can plug those into the formula. I, I like your idea of having kind of a comprehensive effluent study that takes, you know, GSI's input, but then kind of wraps everything together in one study where there are local wastewater treatment professionals that we all work with that could do that. We'd be getting proposals for that and looking at those costs at least. And then in terms of the shallow aquifer injection, I think, Tim, just one quick question for you again. Are you still on? Yeah. You're there. Is there some way to have a greater confidence that at our affluent levels, we could inject at 120 feet and minimize the risk of mounting to the surface? And is there, is there other techniques for understanding that? Because it's true that our, our whole groundwater monitoring program is all going to be shallow wells. We're not going to go down deep for that network of wells where it's our task by the regional board and by county EHS is to improve the shallow aquifer. Because it's trending and influencing the deeper aquifer and, and all of our, if our leach systems individually are committing or, or causing some of the nitrate issues or then all of the nitrate issues beyond what background's coming in, flowing through the groundwater. You know, we, we have to address it at the shallow level. Going, I agree that going deep kind of negates what the purpose is, why we're a problem, special problems area and how we're going to solve it.
Well, you know, I, I, I think it's worth looking at again, to be honest with you, the shallow zone. We, 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 over the course of the last few months and many of the meetings that we've had, we, we, we expressed some reservations about the shallow zone and a lot of the reservations come from a lack of information. As Andy can say, he's on the phone with me. He's done the deep, the, the heavy lifting on digging into the available information. We just know so little about the shallow zone.
Yeah.
We, we do know that it's, that it's, that, that there's discontinuous sediment layers. There's clay sections that are going to be poor, obviously for injection. And, and we, and we know there's a whole ton of shallow domestic wells, which you're probably right. We don't know. But then none of those are used for potable purposes and they surely shouldn't be if they are. So because, because of the water quality challenges in that shallow zone.
So maybe one thing that Doug or Bob could do, I suppose it'd be a call. If someone's got a domestic, shallow domestic well in our district. Our mental health has got a record of it. Is there one? I think the answer is no. But I don't know. I guess if you're in town, I don't think the county will allow you to pull a building permit to build a house unless you connect ID one. That's generally how, just like if you play a municipal sewer system and pull a permit to build a house, I'm not going to jazz, but at least you've got to connect the sewer. That's how that all works. So I don't know if there's a domestic well in our district.
So we, we have in the scope right now, unspent in the budget of the initial $180,000 contract with GSI, a test drilling that's mostly for geotechnical information, but also with the depth of groundwater, we can do groundwater sampling and that sort of thing. And we can make that deeper than we'd intended. And it's actually fairly inexpensive to do certain types of testing to determine what's down at the 80 foot, 100 foot, 120 foot level. So that, that might make more sense to do that than to do a deep well 800 feet deep. And be an order of magnitude cheaper to, to.
Oh, yeah.
The money we don't have, right?
Well, again, if you chose not to move forward with GSI, which, you know, is a big expense. I was just going to take a look at those numbers, but that essentially basically would eliminate the shortfall and leave a, a little bit remaining in, in the current budget. There are also some things that you could do or could think about it in terms of options to provide additional funding, whether it is to complete the monitoring well or take on the effluent review. Yeah. And, and those options would include, and that's basically on the next sheet, you know, for your consideration, you could essentially take Stan Tech's right now and we'll get into their schedule shortly. But you could hold Stan Tech's work to completion of a 30% design in the current fiscal year. And that would then save you about $80,000. There is about $80,000 that would be required to finish it to the 60% according to their estimates. So, and you could fund that 60% out of next year's budget and that would save you $60,000 in this year's, or $80,000 in this year's budget. You could also freeze GSI where they currently are. Originally, the, the work that GSI was going to perform with the injection feasibility study, there was a bit of crossover in this monitoring. Well, if you did not go ahead with the monitoring well and further work by GSI at this point, you could save $35,000. And you know, the other is you have a, an estimated at the end of the year, the end of the fiscal year, you have an estimated cash balance at the end of the fiscal year based on the original bot budget of $108,000. You could basically reduce that safely by about $50,000 if you needed to. And that would still provide about 58,000 in reserve, which would mean, meet your, your cash reserve policy. But that's just a few, a few items, a few areas that you wouldn't have additional money to pull from if, if you needed to.
But this does not include the $600,000 from twelve.
Right, 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 right.
Which we made. Right. So if I could, what would be helpful for me, hopefully everyone else's, understanding in the GSI scope. I mean, I'm looking at feasibility and looking at place 12.
12.
Right. The assessment study costs and then the injection program.
Right.
So what of those, of those two jobs, what are mission critical to getting us to 30 and 60% design? In other words, how do we face the work? I mean, instead of wholesale up, up or down, we should be looking at this strategically, at least in my opinion, what needs to be done to track along with the Stan Tech efforts. So when we get to 30, we have what we need from GSI. Again, I'm not the technical person.
The answer is nothing. You got to convince me why.
Yeah. So. What do you mean?
I actually, your question, the answer is, well, what do you need to have standard design? I was thinking, if the answer is not nothing, then I need to be told why. Because Stan Tech can design the collection system and the treatment plant location and design without regard to whether we're doing a deep injection, shallow injection, creek discharge. Well, creek discharge, yes, it can't be, you know.
So. But if I could, just to, to that point, but to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but to get to the assessment engineer portion, don't we need, I make time, or maybe we don't, we need some cost associated as part of the overall project costs. That's, it's, it's associated with injection or, or maybe it's not until you do your comparisons, we do a comparative of, you know, designing construction, operation and transportation. Now, we're talking with the water board the other day on those, that injection operation and trans, transportation costs are significant.
Yeah. So your, your comment is a good one. The assessment engineer, what they work off of is different in every jurisdiction. But they want to be working with numbers that have are conservative enough and have contingencies enough so that the board and the community feels comfortable moving forward with the vote. And, and so we, we have to make that decision when we're at that point. But it, it could be that we don't have all the details nailed down, but we have the worst case scenario and we think, if we think that's acceptable and we have a grant, then we can go with that. But you know, there's different factors that'll play in each of your minds as when we come down to talking about the precise timing of when we're ready for a vote and we feel comfortable with costs.
Doug, quick question. Is there any, I know, is there any grants or funding that if you don't go injection well, we don't fall for it? Is there anything tied to that?
You know what?
Steve has a lot of, when you take reuse water and what we were trying to do, they have a lot of money for that stuff. I just didn't hope we'd lose that option if we did do injection.
So this, this might be a good point. Which slide was it?
It's beyond.
Beyond there or in front of it?
It's in front of it.
Yeah.
Just getting to the options for grant funding.
It just shows you an answer to that question.
Oh, does it?
Yeah. Oh, here we go. Well, it, it, the, please project the ones within our potential grasp at this moment. But there's other funding that may become available, but through the federal infrastructure program that happens. The, the most promising opportunity is associated with our ability to recycle effluent. But recycling effluent is really anything we do with it where we can percolate it into the ground. That is recycling. So.
So it's not tied to. And, and that's, that's a really good question. To my end, again, the state and, and everybody is, is making this community take the step, which we're all here to do. And if the carrot is what we'll fund, a grant to help with the system, if you have to spend a base of $1,000 per year for every resident in this district just for the injection, that's not the operation of the treatment system, maintenance of the collection system, any of those administration and that cost that we're going to have $1,000 a year per person in this or per, per connection in this district just for the care and feeding of the injection. And, and if, and if that's what they say you have to go, you have to do in order to get the grant, then they are manufacturing Los Osos. Cause I'm not going for that.
Yeah. Well, your, your point's well taken and, and as we learn more about injection, if we can't do it in the shallow, shallow aquifer. And if we there, there's a bunch of ifs. It looks like one of the most expensive options or the most expensive option for us. Well, it might be cheaper to buy five acres and build a pipeline to it. So that, that's the level of study that we probably need.
Well, that, and that's where I go back to what you had talked about Doug, that one of the things that we need to do. Well, that, and that's where I go back to what you had talked about, Doug, that one of the things that we need to do, in my opinion, is if anybody thinks we're gonna be at an assessment engineer this fiscal year, show me, we're not gonna have the information to do that, especially when we need that information to see what our disposal option is, is first. We just have so many unanswered questions and so much information that we need to develop, that needs to be developed.
In the scheduled slides on the presentation, there's two red asterisks that state exactly what you said, and that is that there's two things. Yeah. In planning and also in implementation, what the critical things that are, could be potential fatal flaws too, that would cause it all to crash and burn, is finding a site and the cost. That's what disrupted Los Osos. And ended up in a, you know, a decade long or more situation where finally the state came in, the county, and they just took it over and made happen what they wanted to make happen. Local decision-making was out the window. You know, that's what we want to avoid. So citing is, is critical.
But how, how much grant funding did Los Osos end up, did end up with that?
I, I don't know off the top of my head. They did have some, and what happens is, you know, when the state comes in, that, I guess that's one advantage. There were greater contributions to construction, design and construction, because the state took over the project. But was that, is that benefit worth it? I mean, you just don't know. Maybe, maybe it's not, their money's not there for us if that happened now, so I don't think we should plan on that. But at, at any rate, that, the whole purpose of that red asterisk is to point out exactly what you're saying. That's without a site, without funding, we, we can't get to that vote.
So I have a recommendation, and we put together a couple of plans. One is a plan to get someone to do evaluations on a cost point of view.
Are you talking about the disposal?
Of the disposal of the effluent. And I think we also need a plan to do the research on whether, well, basically for each of these options for disposal, what kind of grant money can we get? Most expensive options, I mean, not the most expensive option, which is worth, so I think we need that story.
We're piecing together the, the grant timeframes. Lisa is rightfully focused on that, because that's essential to us understanding our real timeframes. And so when we look at the grant opportunities, the infusion of money from the state for septic to sewer conversion and also for recycled water. The good news is that in the state world of funding, it's near term. But the bad news is that applications go in in twenty twenty-two, and funding may not, in reality, occur until twenty twenty-four. And that's the fastest that we could expect to get the current.
The downside to that.
Yeah.
What's the downside to that?
Yeah.
Because if anybody thinks we're gonna be in construction in twenty twenty-three, it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen.
You're, you're right. The only thing I think is in our minds is that will, there, it may, it's very realistic that we may have to request, you know, further extensions from LAFCO. But, you know, as long as we have a strategy and we're developing that, and we're all optimistic and we see potential, and we see where we, where we can't go and where we can go, and so we're moving along.
We're also on the, at the whim of the state for grant money, because we cannot do all this with two hundred thousand dollars a year at LAFCO. And if LAFCO doesn't wanna give us an extension so that we can, you know, get more grant money, then I say give them the keys to the thing. And, cause they, you can't, you can't squeeze blood out of this turnip and get, uh, get a quality system for our community with the money that they've provided us to do.
To your point though, I think where we're headed is further refining the project costs. And at the same time, creating, we've been talking about this, we need that grant milestone timeline that runs parallel to that. So when do we get in, what are we eligible for, when is the decision? And because I'm, I'm assuming, I don't know though, for a benefit assessment process, I mean, we can't just be in process in a loan, in a grant process. We need to know if we're getting the money or not. I, I, I don't know, so I don't know if that's a, if that's a Ross question or from a process standpoint.
We can support, support question, I won't support.
So.
I'm gonna go to election without knowing what our grant is.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd have to assume loans.
No.
Which, which we're not, I think, well, I think, this, the board's not comfortable moving forward on this.
Well, so, so one of the, I mean, I think the process we're going is, is not as piecemeal as I think some might think it is. Everything that's moving forward has to advance as it's advancing. But what we're doing is we're pulling the pieces of the puzzle together, and it, it will come together. But I do think we ought to get an assessment engineer on board after the first year, because they can develop the models and formulas where they can assume a certain grant amount versus the loan amounts. And then that model will allow them to put in the interest rate, because there's a certain interest rate now on low interest rate infrastructure loans, but that's gonna go up with inflation, the revenues go up. But if we have that assessment engineer, basically have a draft of their report and their financial plan, basically is what it is, which is the heartbeat of what they do, is a financial plan based on the engineering that we're helping develop for that assessment engineer. We can have that tool so that we can see us working towards it as grants come available.
I, I, I disagree that we would do that. I understand why you wanna do that, but that there's too many unknowns. For instance, why spend the money on an assessment engineer to get that ready? If we end up with a project that the costs are so invasive and we have no grants, why would we even spend that money? And it doesn't, I don't know that it advances us, it's not work that couldn't be done when we have, you know, all the answers. That's a decision for the board, bring it to the board, we'll vote on it.
I have a little take, I appreciate your position. That is identifying within that model how much grant funding we need to, to come up with something that's successful, gives us ammunition to go to our decision makers and put the screws to them to help us get it done.
That, that's right.
How much, how much does that cost?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying.
My point is that we have some.
That's a five thousand dollar.
That provide a real trade-off between it's gonna cost residents, you know, fully loaded, and with loans, it's gonna cost this amount, and we've gotta bring it down to this. I don't know where that sweet spot is.
The other thing.
But that, but that's the value I see of having that exercise, because we need to say, okay, this is viable, when, you know, or we need, you know.
The only thing I'd add to that is, we don't have the ability on the, the back of an envelope to even have an order of magnitude cost without a professional saying, well, look, that these loans are twenty-year maturity, these are thirty-year maturity, you can get bonds with a longer term. And this is how that could be distributed. And by the way, you didn't even think about these costs. You know, that's where the assessment engineers have the expertise in. So you, you get them involved early so that you're headed down, you get, you're hitting the target when you get to the end.
We have thirty thousand.
Right. And I, I was gonna say that it may be that you retain an assessment engineer to do what you, you have laid out, but then you're still gonna need, before you go to the assessment boat, you're gonna need an assessment engineer to do the final tabulation when you've got all the information. So you may need, you know, the assessment engineer to give you an initial perspective of what you're looking at. And then you're gonna have to finish that again, when you've got all the information in hand.
And I would remind Bob and Doug and the board and, oh, Mr. Tindall, that we had asked for a report on SB ten, the impact of SB ten, because we don't even know right now what decides our platform, because we don't know what, what control there is on ADUs. And if we have to build a treatment capacity system now that will assume a, a, a number of ADUs in the town, and I'm not paying for someone else's ADU capacity. And so we don't know what that, that, that might cost us, that, you know, and, and I don't know if a grant will pay for that, but if it does, fine. But that's a huge issue to the cost of the treatment system. So I hope that's coming back.
It, it may come back, you know, Ross and I were discussing that today, we may have it on the agenda for next week.
So November, or if we do it in November or December.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yes.
And, and again, if it's next week, that's, that's fine. I would want good information and not, not early information. So if it's December, that's, if it's January, that's fine. I just want a thorough understanding of what that SB ten means for us.
I have a couple, well, where do we wanna go?
Well, I, I think, you know, there are a couple of items that you haven't looked at. And if you desire to, we could. We have the milestones in there, in, in, in a chart from StanTech. If you choose to review those, and also cost estimates. But beyond that, I, I think, you know, you've had a, some good conversation. And it will be helpful to provide at least direction in terms of how we resolve the current, current issue that we're dealing with. And what am I saying? I, I think it is pretty clear that you need to move ahead with the effluent options study. We need to talk about doing that in timeframe. And it, it appears that without that, I'm not sure that you can make a decision rather relative to GSI. And at this time, you know, you, you've heard the high-level planning estimate from GSI. And maybe you just keep that in mind at the present time, and until we get the rest of the effluent options reviewed, and, and then make a determination on where we go. And in the meantime, it would be up to us to continue to find additional funding, period. You know, if that is short-term or long-term. So I'm sort of thinking that maybe unless you want to look at those schedules or timeframes that Doug Scott laid out here, maybe we ought to start discussing direction.
I, I had a couple of questions on the budget items. I'm on slide five, we've told the contract costs.
Yes.
So, two things, one, that preliminary environmental for sixty-five thousand. I don't know if you can answer this, was that predicated on phase one, or is that for the total district?
I'd probably have to ask Doug to answer that. I think that was an estimate that he had received.
Yeah, the, you know what, that, it was really on everything associated with permitting a plant site that, more than anything else, because the, putting in the collection system, although it'll have to be addressed environmentally, is not a rigorous environmental exercise, because we're working out in the middle of a road, improved road, and we're mitigating an environmental problem.
Right, I'm thinking about it for the cycling.
Yes, and so this, this really was a budget that UPC at least, they submitted a proposal that was in this ballpark, was, was this amount precisely? So I was never thinking about, in order to work through planning and site the package plant, even the, the possibility that it was outside the district, and the district was not the lead agency in the environmental process, as we are looking and citing for, you know, mile radius around the district. Very likely that it could be outside the district.
Right, so, but just, just to stay focused on the, the budget to stay as it. What I'm worried about is, you know, we, we had the StanTech scope increase because we asked them to increase it based on the geography. So I'm just asking if the same is true of the environmental or not? Or, or if we just need to make sure we.
It, it does make a difference, you know, permitting, if, if this plant is adjacent to the creek, that's gonna take a different level of environmental study.
I think the environmental, we are, we are not there.
I know.
The environmental's not gonna happen this year.
Well, and that's why, you're getting to my point, and that is looking at all this work and spacing, having a phased budget, like, we're not, we don't need to approve GSI all at once. But we, you know, StanTech's not gonna do everything. How do we, how do we slice this, phase it, so that it tracks with, I mean, some of it's the discovery that we need information in order to develop the project and know what the costs are. But, but, you know, on the, the fluid injection program, we're not getting rid of those costs this year, right? So I'm, I'm just asking, I guess if you're looking for direction, that would be mine, like, looking at the fiscal year straddle that we're moving into, it's like, what needs to be done to keep Stan, to stay on track with the design? To get us to that design. And then the other thing is, you know, we, we have the county for six hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, we did.
Okay, so I, I don't see that reflected anywhere, and I, where are we with that?
I, I have, I reached out to Lars this last week. I haven't heard back from him at this particular point.
So, so I think we need to talk, we need to, we need to double time on that, because we need, we need to know if and when.
Yes.
So we're gonna get back, I mean, that's six hundred thousand dollars we're asking for.
That's your design.
I, I know, so that's why, that's not insignificant, and it's not reflective in here. They're in the.
Yeah, I, I didn't reflect it simply because it wasn't a reality yet.
Understood, but I think.
But the speed of all of this is gonna hinge on that or some other source.
Right, right, right. So I bring it up now because I think we need to accelerate our attention to it. And if we need, whatever we need to do, do that. So, that's kind of my overall, I just.
I think on the environmental, to, my, my request is that we look at who is the best consultant that will do the environmental on a wastewater treatment plant. I don't know who Laguna used for, for all of their work, I have no idea, I probably should, but I don't. And I know the city of Santa Maria, the city of Guadalupe has done wastewater treatment plant upgrades with disposal. They used an environmental consultant that does this for their line of work. And I would hope that we would reach out to some of those firms to see what, they're gonna know what the cost of the environmental is gonna be, having done that work as there.
I've got a meeting with Laguna Sanitation on the tenth.
Okay.
And certainly it's easy enough for me to reach out to Guadalupe.
Yeah. Shannon Sweeney.
Oh, I know Shannon very well.
She is a, and she'd be happy to help us.
Yeah.
She's a great resource.
In fact, I was instrumental in getting her in, into Guadalupe, so I.
You deserve a kudo for that.
Yes, she is.
So, you want comments from board directly?
Yeah, I, yes, I mean.
I mean, we're, we don't have an action I need to write off. So you're gonna hear our comments, and you're gonna have to figure out what the, what the right thing to do is, right? You're going to hear our comments and you're going to have to figure out what the, what the right thing to do is, right?
I'm bringing up actions. Well, I think you, you do.
Okay, I'll, I'll go for it. I, I think the, I, I was at a point of saying assessment engineering, $30,000 with, with weight. I'm curious of what you said, Doug, about setting up some, that's not going to be $30,000 worth of work, I wouldn't imagine, but I'd be curious to see what that would look like to help us understand the financial impact to, to each of us and, and at least know the factor of that. I think the, the GSI work has to be held until we do a, some type of planning review. What are, what's the best disposal option given all the discussion? And by the way, all this discussion's been really good. We're, we're highlighting problems that exist in trying to do this in a small community. And it's, there might be a level of frustration that you're hearing me, and it's because I understand the magnitude, what we're trying to do, what we have to do. And, and so to that end, to balance out the funding, I think maybe putting StanTech to 30% this fiscal year and then get some of this other work done like that evaluation study would put us in a good place moving forward. If we could get some of the county funding that we talked about, and then we can start to accelerate that, then I think that, that's great. And like I said, I think the environmental is, we're not, we're not anywhere close to that this fiscal year. And we should be worried about that at this point. And so I, I would be in favor of holding off on GSI, doing the, the review of the disposal options and find the best thing for StanTech at 30%. And then we can move it forward next month. That seems to make a lot of sense to me. And if there's unused capacity after we make those adjustments.
Well, here we go again. This reminds me of the last meeting, Ross.
Yeah, I, I did. I, I was just thinking that same thing. I'll, I'll see if I can't let them know.
Okay.
Okay, so I contacted Lisa Palmer, let her know that she lost the Zoom meeting. Stop the meeting to get us back on.
Okay. We're getting close to wrap up anyways. What if the laptop died again?
I, I don't know. I, I talked to Bob beforehand about, he had Doug there, so that was going to be helpful. I would hope that would have been avoided this time. I was not under the impression that they were getting ready to wrap up, so hopefully I'm wrong.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll hang on. Hey, Andy, if you, if you want to go, it's getting late. I don't know if you've had dinner, but I can probably handle monitoring and responding to any additional pieces.
Sure.
Unless you really can't wait to hear the last few minutes.
Okay. Okay.
Start video.
Muted.
But I want to choose a different.
Actually, we're still in session.
Okay, can you hear us now, Ross?
I can hear you, but there's no video.
Ross?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Are you muted, Ross?
No, I am not.
Thumbs up if you can hear us, Ross.
Oh, he can hear us.
We just can't hear him. Oh, you know what?
It's because I have the sound, it's heard that off on the computer because otherwise you guys.
Oh, okay.
So just hit the button up top.
Over here, there you are. Say something, Ross.
Something.
So. It's got to be a mute up here.
Yeah, did you turn it off? There. Can you hear now?
Your audio is good. There's no video.
You can't talk to us.
I can hear.
I don't think that'll.
Yeah. Well, we'll be back there shortly.
He can, they can hear us and I'll try to get back on mic.
So.
They can hear us.
Okay, so my last comment is, I believe we should be focusing on is the site. And it seems to me that the area we produce good water, that should be a value. That should help us find the site. And I'm thinking of the South Bend town, a farm that's in the district. We have, and up the hill there is this big farm there. Seems like they want water. So that would be the reason.
That was, that was considered as a responsible option. So. So we just need to.
No, nothing's been discussed.
That's what StanTech.
Right.
But I really think, and maybe it's anything's going to do with money. But I just think if we can find the site, then all of a sudden, all the things that we're watching, like the GSI works. If we don't know where we're going to put this thing, where are we going to drill our, our injection at? Why would we waste money drilling it and putting it somewhere and then say, yeah, that's not a good place for us? Where we end up in our plant? So now we have to get our site. But it's not that. We have to force more money in it to help StanTech.
Well, you know, it just, and I'm sure StanTech is, is hearing this. But as I recall, StanTech is to complete their list of site recommendations with a basis of design, which would be coming back in December. So that's relatively soon. And.
You might want to, when they're doing that evaluation, we were talking so much about injections. Injection for all sites. I think they need to expand and focus on a bit on, just like Brad said, there's properties over here that we, you know, whether it's water, you know, whatever. They need to consider those areas also, not just injection.
I think now that our mountain hills within that model of regions.
Considering.
Well, no, I don't think it has to be. But I just, that's a thing that's.
Yeah, well, because you know, you know, pipe plants won't really start to possible.
But I think it's a great story to say, yeah, we're special problems area and that was something. We're looking at this field, a little bit, and we just. We should be able to get some money out of the state.
The water is the water. We want no broken away.
Everyone says they hate it, they shouldn't use it, but they use it.
Yeah.
It's the whole choice. Anything else? Well, I think, are we trying to wrap you, the other, we're, we're here to give, based on the workshop, the discussion we've had here to provide direction for follow up. And you have, I mean, or we can do, we can do another round if you want, but.
Well, just that's it for now, and then I would like to review my actual items.
Yeah, I was going to ask Fox to do that, actually.
What?
Yeah, no, yeah.
The only thing that I have as, as to talk about is the consideration of the direct disposal and basically what that ballpark figure is and permits and fees and everything else that they can hold up. But I think, I don't know, he just helped us with like, whatever we can do. But I think if we get a good feeling on that, what they'll allow, what they want, what level of treatment has to be to do that, might be a good, a good avenue to.
There's agencies that, that do that. City of Longboke does that.
And Steve, Steve, any, to following up on that, there was a conversation, I think, Doug, when you and I talked with the Water Board earlier this year, and James gave us some resources for following up on the discharge option. So anyway, you know, we kind of in our matrix of disposal options, we should.
Because I do agree with Tom, as far as we've had. I mean, even as a contractor, just someone digging your, oh, ripping out our lines, they will ruin it. All of a sudden, everything shut down. We've got to have to be a disposal in some other secondary.
And then I agree with everything the other directors have contributed. And just also emphasize wanting to see more of a phased expense approach, if you will. Here are the critical things we have to do now. Here's what we can do in three months. Here's what we can do in six months. Here's what we can do in nine months. So that is where we have to prioritize work. We're, we're doing that surgically and strategically. And then the flip side is, and I know we've talked, but it's just, we've got to be equally aggressive in pursuing the grant side of the project, because we are developing the engineering side. Because project design in the world, we need grants to pay for it, so. And, and to that end, we did, you know, I talked with Doug a couple weeks ago now. And we are having, you know, we have money in the budget for dedicate, we have $10,000 in the budget for just that, the grant. Pursuing grant. So we, Bob's authorized, Greg, or M and S. Right. Greg, who'd done the last round, and was successful in getting us the water recycling grant. And it came back on, so. So, you know, identifying.
I was just going to say, how long you're prioritizing. When you look back to work that GSI, I do that at a very high level on the injection cost. And that's been very helpful. That's steered a lot of this discussion so far about how far are we going to go down that, that road given the cost. And so that, that was a strategic piece of information that came at the right time. May have cut, slowed down their work on other stuff, but it's, it's the right thing. I know it's.
Okay, so, all right, based on that, wrap up on the action items. Do you want to, Brad, do you have a?
I would like to do that. Now, which eight actions. My first three come from Lisa's marvelous email. And I, I will workshop thoughts. I, I would like to read these action items, and if you think you've already done them, then just tell me where it is, because I didn't see it. Okay, first one. The board needs a full and accurate financial snapshot of our budget. Proof expenditures, projected expenditures, what's funded, what's not funded, and possible funding sources for uncut work. So I know we have kind of, we have some slides in here that talk about stuff, but we didn't really have an answer. Maybe after tonight, we have closer approximations to that actually. So I think that's an action is to put that together. So you think you already done that or is that?
Probably need some work.
Okay. Tell me if I'm going to pass. Second one.
I'm just interjecting. So just the email he's referring to, I sent Bob.
Right.
An email. Did you provide that to everybody?
Uh, no, I didn't.
So I just sent him, here are my thoughts for the workshop, and Brad and I had talked about it at the project management committee. So that's why. So they were referring to. Yeah.
Okay, second one. Board needs to fully understand StanTech design process, milestones, and timing of board review and decisions along the way. So I know there's some StanTech milestone things on this one slide, but I didn't see where the word is interfacing with them.
I thought that, that that was the case. I'd have to go back. Could we look at that slide by chance?
It's called StanTech milestone.
Right, yep, yep. There are timeframes where StanTech is supposed to submit certain, have certain submittals to the district. The district has a certain period of time to respond. And I had taken that to mean not just staff response, but board response as well.
So you're talking about where's this district review period?
Right, yes.
Yeah, I think we are hoping to have a little bit more description of what it would be.
Sounds like we're, based on next discussion, we'll see that based on designing.
Right, yep, yep, yep. And then you'll see the. And then you'll see the 30%. I think there's a date there, if I'm not mistaken. The district will receive it in late March and need to respond to StanTech by early April. I think it's April 2nd or something. Which slide is it?
It's on 10.
10.
The schedule. It doesn't have the exact date, but it, we could plug those into that.
God, I'm interested in having some kind of description of scope, just so we know what we need to do. So, I mean, it's just general review, great, but it seems to be like there's going to be certain points on the line and be evaluating.
Maybe we could get that in September.
Yeah.
First base comes back. Yeah, that's a good point.
Maybe they come back.
Anyway. Okay, next one is. And then she might explain this. So we have matching money. And it's not free. They want stuff back. They have a number of items that we're supposed to give them information on, correct?
That's right.
So I think we need to make that very visible, have a list of all the things we have to do, have an explanation which ones are currently funded and which ones we have to kind of figure out how to do them quickly, efficiently.
Correct. That's very astute of you. There are some of those items that need to be filled in. They're not major, but they have to be done and they have to be budgeted.
Well, they're not major until we get to the last minute and we realize we haven't done the bit. So I think if we get organized, it'll be very straightforward. But I just want to make sure that we're all tracking.
Yeah, we have, I, I have those lists. It's, it's in the grant itself, the grant agreement.
Right. But you may not have a table that says, here are the twelve things, and here are the ones that we already have covered and we're very confident on. And here are the ones that we've always thought about. Because I think that's the story, right?
Yeah, there actually is a table like that. And so we, we can identify very quickly the ones that we need to focus, we need to give some focus to that aren't addressing any current scopes.
Right. So that would make me. Okay, next action item. Now, some of these, I know you already know. So planning assess the effluent disposal options, which would include costs and not just the cost of building, but the cost to operate. That's the injection, and that's the one that's freaking me out the most, is the operating cost. Okay, next action item. Time to assess grant opportunities for each effluent disposal option. And then we talked about. And then you talked about finding out about sustainability county compared to that one. And we talked about an environmental, we really don't want to have until this fiscal year, so I'm still trying to figure out what that actually is all about.
You know, realistically, and what you need to do in order to really get environmental started is you need to be a little bit further along than we currently are. You need to have usually a site identified, potential site, as well as alternatives.
And disposals.
And, and, and a basic project design. So you know what it is and where it's going to happen at.
Are we spending money on smart help this fiscal year?
It could begin if you.
I see $65,000 on your budget. But we're not gonna spend it, right?
We may spend a portion of it.
You may spend. Right, if we get started with it in the spring, once you've got those questions answered, then you spend a portion of it.
Do you agree, Doug?
Yeah, that's a very site specific thing. And so we have to have options, and then we can evaluate three options, five options. But we have to have options.
I would just say that there's, I don't see the need of starting the environmental business this year. It's not gonna get us any closer. It might end up being work that was unnecessary or the wrong thing. We're better off getting our design and our disposal option intact and have this thing mature enough. And then you do the, you know, like, we're building a degree base, and I didn't do an environmental document. I say, well, we might go somewhere. We knew what we were gonna do and how big it was gonna be, and how many truck trips we do, and then you do your environmental.
Right.
Yeah, and that's, we need to know what this thing's gonna be to do the environment. So that's not gonna be this year.
Right, so to that point, I'm gonna finish this off before I forget. So on that preliminary environmental, I mean, you could could allocate a portion of that to this fiscal year and some to the next, right? That frees up some money if we need.
We can zero it out. That's what I'm here for, Tom.
Yeah, zero it out.
Yeah. You're right. So we're looking for follow up recommendations. And actually, never mind, because you'll come back to us based on all the feedback.
If you want to come back with an environmental, and when it's good, bring it back and see what the board says.
Yeah.
No problem. Okay, last one. Assessment engineer. I think we want to come up with a scope of work that says they put together a basic model and stop. Is that all right?
Be the, we have a, we have a general outline before our assessment engineer passed away. We don't have the model, but the financial plan is the heartbeat. That, I agree with you that we could have an, select an assessment engineer and have them prepare a financial plan, outline and model. I think that's a good idea to do that.
So the question is, if we have them do that, are they gonna spend these $30,000 or would it be less?
Well, you know, usually, and for me, I can't definitively answer that. Depends on the scope of work that is developed. And ultimately, what we would do is complete a solicitation and based on assessment, assessment engineer qualifications. And then typically, you would negotiate that price once you've selected who that engineer is.
That's a process, but I'm just saying, what's your gut feel? Is it?
Yeah, well, we derived that.
Or $10,000 or $15,000?
Well, that $30,000 wasn't just pulled out of thin air. The previous contract was for $20,000, was an independent retired assessment engineer. And we weren't sure that that would get us to the end, but that was a budget that would get us close to the end. So what this $30,000 is, is if we had to start over and we found someone like Lynn Takaiichi, that would work, but assessment engineers are all over the spectrum in terms of cost. And finding someone like Lynn is harder to do now than it's ever been. Because, like you said, this was a retirement job for him. And so he, we got the benefit of 40 years' experience, but we didn't get to the end as he passed away. So, anyway, the $30,000 certainly would get us preliminary results and certainly would get us what it is that we're looking for right now. And hopefully with some left over.
So my suggestion for budgeting purposes is that we leave that where it is.
Just bring back what you want to report us. I don't think I'll support anything near $30,000 at this point, because I don't know how we would repeat the work. But maybe I missed something, so bring the scope and the cost and.
Right.
See.
Or, yeah, maybe it's phase, right? There's the preliminary, the model that it builds, because I do see value in making sure we're asking all the right questions and getting all the right information, but not going to the full blown. So I would say, instead of arguing about $30,000, get the request out there. Phase it in part A and part B and see what comes back.
Yeah, so my thought is, we want to be able to say, we have to.
Right.
It's not final lines, but we have a basic model written for this.
And it's the beginnings of another issue that is gonna take some discussion, which is what you'd refer to as the fair share assessment. That's part of the model. And so that's another value to getting that early on, discussing that, because you don't have to have the end cost to determine the fair share, because it's typically not by value, but by percentage and benefit.
And I'm scratching my head. I will put that together with this pretend.
Well, that's, again, that's a piece.
Part of the model, right?
Figure out, I mean, every assessment engineer's gonna figure out.
Yeah, if the model should yield good information based on the low end of the spectrum and the high end, and then options in between. So at least those, you've got those data points, and you can draw the line and say you already think. Looks like we're frozen again there, Ross.
Yeah, I was just texting Lisa.
Okay. I'm glad to hang on, but it seems like they won't likely need my engagement at this point.
It's not seeming like it, I agree.
Yeah.
Ah, you dropped and froze.
Yes, I think I'll go ahead and sign off and, you know.
Yeah, I think.
If any question comes up, they can call my cellphone. I'll pick up.
You got it. I'll let them know.
All right. Thank you, Ross. Good night.
Yeah, good night.
Back.
Okay. We can see you and we can hear you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. I think, well, just piggybacking on the funding and making sure we're looking at everything, I can't remember, I think I emailed you guys about getting on the urban funding list.
Yes.
We need to officially do that. Doug, I know we talked about many, but I just want to make sure that makes it off to our list of potential, when it's worth joining. You know, if it's 1% or 10% of a potential brand, but let's do it.
They're not currently offering anything specifically for us, but I'll get with Jane and interview her and find out. We'll get an answer back to you.
And then, I don't have anything else that I would layer, but I'm looking for. Reshuffling the work and. Anything else you want to wrap up?
Well, you know, essentially, I've got a list of things from each of you. There's a lot that's in commonality. And my suggestion would be, I'll review that list now, where I see the commonality. And maybe I can bring that back and have you officially bless it next week in terms of direction.
Yeah, I think minutes from the meeting and then direction would be great, yeah. And then.
I'll email it first.
Yeah, you can just email what you have, just email it as a recap from the discussion.
Sure. So if you'd like, I can review the areas of commonality and, you know, just to make sure I've got them. So it is placing TSI work to be placed on hold. Pursue the affluent review. Pursue additional funding, including accounting funding. Move forward with the assessment engineer. And the assessment engineer is to come up with a finance model.
I don't think you said move forward with the assessment engineer. I think we met.
Yeah, proposal, the proposal, that's on. With the, with the process. Continue to focus on achieving a site. And again, Mike mentioned the discharge to the creek, but that would be covered with looking at all affluent options. Come up with the phased critical approach, prioritizing work and budget. And that's pretty similar to what Doug was talking about in terms of full and accurate budget that reflects timing. A more detailed schedule on the design project. Let's see. Hold on the assessment environmental document or process for the time being. That's pretty much what I had.
Action, not just.
Okay.
That's direct here.
I think he signed off. And, you know, I apologize, this is our first effort in a borrowed hall to have a joint live Zoom meeting. And so we're trying out the technology here, and I think we've had enough practice that if we do this again, it'll go much smoother.
The practice is not.
I think, I don't know, but we'll talk about it on next week. I don't know, Bob, do we need to take an action on what we're gonna do as far as in person versus hybrid versus?
Well, we can certainly put that on the agenda.
I think we should.
Yeah. And I think, you know, just in, and I had some communication with Ross earlier today. And I think he indicated that he was looking at December in terms of being able to be here in present for the meeting, so that might, you know, we've only got next week.
Right.
Probably should just hold where we are. We'll have a discussion on the agenda as to returning. And most likely, we'll start that in December.
Okay. Anything else, Doug? Anything else on the action items?
I think, I think it would be good to, well, I guess to include in the action items, just in my mind, implementing them. I have no additional comments.
Okay, then speaking of next week's meeting, our next regular meeting is here at.
Six o'clock.
6:00 p.m. All right, then.
Who's the mover in the second?
Yes, Mike, Army was the second.
And who was the maker?
Tom.
All right. Thank you.
I'll look for favor. Hi.
Unanimous. Thank you, Ross. I'm gonna.
Good to hear you, Doug.
I said, thank you. Well, we're gonna sign off now.
All right. Thanks, Doug. See ya.
Thank you, Autumn, for being there. Appreciate it.